I'd like to call to order the June 8th meeting of the Barnstable County Commissioners, and I'd like you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal. And please join in a moment of silence what we think about those people who are serving our country, the ones that are instant in harm's way, and the ones that have sacrificed their lives for us. Thank you very much. As, let me start with a, yes, Mr. Rogers?
Mr. Chairman, maybe I'm wrong about this, but I'm disappointed that neither of my suggested agenda items actually made it to the agenda, at least as I read your agenda. I sent my email to all commissioners asking first for clarification on the commissioners' oversight role of CEVAC and CLC, and secondly, I have a deep concern about the CEVAC and CLC forum. On my first point, and this is my cause for concern, from your own Home Rule Charter, it says, "The Board of Regional Commissioners shall exercise the general supervision and direction over all agencies of the Cape Cod Regional Government unless otherwise provided by law. Each agency shall furnish to the Board of Regional Commissioners forthwith, once they're requested, any information, materials or otherwise as the Board of Regional Commissioners may request and as the needs of their office and the interests of the Cape Regional Government may require." So I find that passage at odds with your understanding of not having any oversight of CEVAC and CLC, and I would appreciate your addressing that issue at some point. The second issue that goes to that is Assembly Delegate Lynch's comment at the Assembly Meeting last week where he asked Sheila Lyons, "How could it be that the commissioners have no oversight if they've authorized the budgets of CEVAC and CLC?" So, second question about that same issue. To preface my second point, I attended the New England Energy Education Project All-Day Conference yesterday in Marlboro. Maggie Downey was there, I saw Mark Zalinski's name tag, but not Mark. If there was one overarching theme of the conference, which is mostly pro-wind conference, it was that dialogue between proponents and opponents of industrial wind must be kept open. No dissembling, no prevaricating, no hiding in executive session. Everyone gets listened to. If you want a project ever to come to fruition, you'd better level with the public on what you honestly know about the science, the economics, the noise, the health factors, the sighting of industrial wind. And having said that, my second point is I'm concerned about the upcoming forum of CLC and CEVAC. If this conference is a repeat of past control forums put on by CEVAC, if it is just a PowerPoint presentation, if only written questions are allowed, if it is not marked by the hallmarks of the Nauvoo Conference yesterday of openness, transparency, financial disclosure, you're doing us and yourselves a great disservice. It would be better not to waste all of our time on a forum that just mimics CEVAC forums of the past.
Thank you. Mr. Erdman?
Thank you.
From Wolfley.
Thank you. Press the ribbon from Wolfley, and I thank you for your time this morning. I'm wondering, Mr. Chairman, if I might approach and hand some documents to the commissioners? Secondly, what I respectfully request is, I don't know what the time limit is, but we've been coming for many, many weeks, a number of weeks we weren't able to address anything, so I'd like to be given the opportunity to fully express myself. I don't think it will take more than five minutes or six minutes at most, would that be appropriate?
I think that, although I appreciate your frustration, that I think we would have to schedule it as an agenda item in order for you to address us on items that are not directly on the agenda. However, I am in receipt of some information from the Attorney General's Office, which says that we may, providing we call it out on the agenda, that under new business, items that could not be reasonably known by the chair prior, let's see, 48 hours ahead of time, can indeed be introduced, and we, and it would, the clarification was that new business, which is a very general, broad term, had to be modified with that particular phrase.
Right. Well, you know, it's very confusing to the public, you having an agenda item on continuation of a discussion on, I think, open meetings, that's one of your agenda items. During that period, can members of the public comment on what you're discussing? Because it isn't a agenda item, we have some thoughts on it, can we stand up and be recognized and just comment on that item? Is that my understanding?
During that, given that time.
Okay, that's helpful to understand that. So I have a brief letter to read and some documents distributed, and I will really rush through this, and I have copies of the letter also. Dear Chairman Doherty and other Barnstable County Commissioners, I would respectfully like to make the following comments and a form of request. First, I would like to note that today marks the eighth consecutive meeting of the county commissioners since I and many others began on April 20th, meeting with the commissioners, and I urge you to take action to correct serious deficiencies in the conduct and management of certain Barnstable County employees and two public entities over which the commissioners have some oversight responsibility. Members of the public have requested that the commissioners place this item on their official agenda, address these issues at every single meeting since. There is currently a petition in circulation online that has attracted over 300 signatures conveying the same message to the commissioners: Do something, do your duty, respond to the concerns of the public rather than ignoring them. Despite numerous assurances by commissioners flint and lines that this body would address these issues, the chairperson, the chairman, Mr. Doherty, has still not placed this item on the agenda and evidently refuses to do so, as even referenced by Mr. Rogers. In fact, Mr. Doherty has responded by limiting the public comment period in previous meetings to a mere five minutes minus the time required for the pledge of allegiance and moment of silence in honor for service men and women. We believe the commissioners collectively have done nothing meaningful to address these concerns, and we find this inexcusable. Second, I would like to go on record saying that we categorically reject Mr. Doherty's statement that this body can exercise no meaningful oversight over the Cape Light Compact or the Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative. This statement is false. More to the point, you have never, you have never even tried to exercise any oversight, or do you show any signs of accepting your responsibility to do so? No one ever said or implied that the commissioners have the authority to direct all of the actions of CLC or CEVAC. But that does, but that does not mean that you cannot ask these public entities to explain their actions or to provide documents such as audited financial statements. That should be publicly disclosed, nor does it mean that the commissioners cannot encourage them to engage the public in a constructive manner. Clearly, this is the minimum that you can be expected of you. Instead, the Barnstable County Commissioners have adopted a position of complete and abject helplessness despite their statutory authority and their obvious and legitimate interest in these entities. And Mr., and Chairman Doherty has encouraged his fellow commissioners to think only of the limits of their oversight capabilities rather than their really influence and authority in this regard. And can I please, just for a moment, hand you the following two documents? This is the full extract, or excerpt, from the Charter, part of it was referenced by Mr. Rogers, I'd give you the full one, it's in color, that highlights, if you don't mind passing that down.
I do not mind.
And I give yours in a second, Commissioner. But I just draw your attention to the, this is Article III, Executive Branch, and in red I have highlighted the key points. On the second page, you have the responsibility to supervise the care and custody, and custody of all Cape Cod Regional Government property, institutions, and agencies, to supervise the collection of all Cape Cod Regional Government revenues and disbursement of funds, to supervise the collection of the depositories of all Cape Cod Regional Funds, and I point this paragraph H, "At any time to inquire into the conduct of office or performance of duty of any Cape Cod Regional Government officer, department head, or employer." I hand you your copy. The second point, very briefly, this is taken from this morning, from the website of Barnstable County, under the tab, County Departments, including, starting with Department of Health and Environment, Department of Human Services, Department Information Technology, and it's on the, if you load on the second page, right after Cape Cod Economic Development Council comes Cape Light Compact. This is a Department of the County. I will hand that out for you. The third handout, and thank you for your tolerance this morning, is on the, directly this morning from the Cape Light Compact page, website, under History, it says, starts with, "What is Cape Light Compact?", on the same website, now I had it pinned on the back of this, I highlighted, "Who administers Cape Light Compact?", quote, right from the CLC website. "Barnstable County is the fiscal agent for Cape Light Compact and provides administrative oversight and supervision." That's from this morning. And again, thank you for your tolerance, just a little bit more. So we find it's inexcusable. I don't understand an attorney who could come here and write a letter to you saying that you don't have direct oversight of that agency, and that agency is the major funding source for Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative, so it really is inexcusable from our point of view. Finally, I would like to make a request, and I do this respectfully. I hereby respectfully request that the Chairman Doherty recludes himself from this meeting effective immediately, so the members of the public may address the remaining commissioners on a topic in which the chairperson has a clear conflict of interest, the Cape Light Compact, in which Mr. Doherty is also chairman and a long-serving board member. We have matters to discuss with the Barnstable County Commissioners that concern Mr. Doherty personally and directly. Under the circumstances, he cannot be properly, he cannot properly be present as a participating member of the commission, and he certainly cannot chair the meeting during this time. At this time, we respectfully ask Mr. Doherty to allow one of the other commissioners to serve as the chairperson instead, and we ask him to leave the room during this discussion. Finally, there, I'm not going to read the rest of this, there are serious matters that need to be discussed. That's the transfers of money from CEVAC to CLC to CEVAC. We ask for detailed accounting of legal, of any legal or developmental costs, or any other costs paid by CLC for the benefit of CEVAC or any other party. Written explanations of what is meant by the stabilization of electric rates as benefit to consumers. What does it mean? How does it benefit members of the Comback or other consumers? Please explain what tangible benefit CLC consumers may drive by providing 100% of the capital to CEVAC but receiving only 10% of its benefit, and as we see in the Barnstable experience, that's even being denied them in terms of, Barnstable wants all of the revenue. I only have one other question, and I don't know if it's appropriate to ask for a response from the chairperson or not. But if he doesn't reclusive himself, which is the right and appropriate thing to do, I ask you a simple question, sir, with all respect. You've been on this Cape Light Compact for many years and you're current chairman. It's a simple question. How much money, and I know you know the answer, because you've been there for so many years, how much money has CLC provided to CEVAC in 2011 and in previous years? How much money? That's a simple question. I know you know, because you were there for all the votes, I'm sure. It's not in the minutes, you know that. It's not in the public minutes. For, one, there's only one public minutes for 2011 on the website. We showed it to you in the hall about a week and a half or two weeks ago, it had no mention of any money transfer from CLC to CEVAC. So, how much money has been transferred from CLC to CEVAC in the year 2011? Is that appropriate to ask? I know you know the answer. How do we get the answer? Can't get it from public records, we can't get it from the website, we've written, called, and asked questions. Please provide why these funds were transferred in secret, not referencing CEVAC minutes at all, and not reference in CLC minutes. And please explain how and why Con Edison came to provide $520,000 from Con Edison to CEVAC. What did they do to earn the money? Why was that money transferred? Did it go first to CLC and then ultimately to CEVAC? And because you're the fiscal agents, the three of you, did you sign the documentations proving the transfer of that? And these aren't small sums of money. Please state publicly today why the commissioners continue to refuse to ask direct, here's what I can't get over, I don't want to get emotional. But as I, I know something about the way organizations function. I spent 33 years of my life consulting, going all over the country, I've worked in 47 states with some of the largest healthcare and pharmaceutical biotech companies in the country, so I know something about the way organizations function. I can't get through my mind, as commissioners, why you continue to refuse to ask direct questions of county employees. To pick the phone up and say to Mr. Zalinski and Ms. Downey, "Tell me, you're representatives", they are assigned by the three of you to go to CEVAC and represent the interests of the Barnstable County residents, and the three of you. Are they represent you at CLC? They're not free agents, do you understand? They're not individuals off the street, they are paid county employees. Part of their job tasks and functions are to represent the citizens of Barnstable County and to represent the three commissioners on those two entities. Why can't you call them up and say, "Give me the information"? Why do you put members of the public through these hurdles and barriers in going to Boston and trying to get the requests through the Attorney General's Office and everything? Why don't you just pick the phone up and say, "Let me see the documents"? You have every right to do it. Under the Charter, you have it highlighted. Why do private citizens have to perform your duties? Don't you think that all citizens of Barnstable County deserve answer to these most basic questions? Especially when these agencies are spending millions of dollars of taxpayer and rate payers' money? Don't they deserve to have this information? Without going through all of these requests, it's so simple. You see, as you know, you've seen the correspondence, nothing's been hidden from anybody during this last three or four months. Why do we have to continue to ask for records out of Boston and get responses from Ms. Downey and Mr. Zalinski, saying to get those, we have to spend thousands of dollars of our money, you know, private citizens' money to get them? When you could pick the phone up and say, "Please deliver by closing business on Friday" the following documents? And then you turn around and make them available? That seems like the simplest solution. So I would like to have an opportunity to really engage you in a conversation, to hear from you, rather than just presenting, and I appreciate, Mr. Doherty, that you gave me more time than you normally do, and I deeply appreciate that. But I don't understand government, I guess, well enough. It seems to me as elective representative, and I appreciate the time you put in, and I can't imagine how people, you know, I deeply appreciate, and I think all of the citizens who come to these meetings appreciate all the time and energy you put forth. But there must be an opportunity where your constituents could sit at a table and just dialogue with you, ask a question, you give me an answer. Because I divide the citizens in any, in any community and country into two broad categories. One would be kooks. And there are kooks everywhere, you know, people who just got time to waste and they're going to hassle you. I was on the Finance Committee in Wolfley and the Personnel Board, and we had some people come to a lot of meetings in the 80s, and they asked foolish questions, and you had to be polite, but you know, there are people like that. I don't think this group here, and the 307 people who so far signed that petition, are kooks. I think we have legitimate issues, we've always been respectful, we've tried to communicate openly and honestly, we send letters to everybody, to the commissioners, to the Assembly Delegates, to you, to, you know, so everybody knew everything we had to say and the requests we were making. So I would hope, and one final point, again, two weeks ago, after the really very unpleasant situation, Mr. Doherty, when many of us were holding our hands up and you didn't call on us that day, you recall it, we all recall it, after that, I called the Attorney General's Office in Boston. Left my number, that day or day later, they called me back. And what I did is I described the way that meeting was handled. I said, "I know nothing about it, I haven't, I did try to read something on the website about open leading laws, I read the Q and A on that and so forth." And I just went through each of the steps that you used, I said, "Was that appropriate or not?" And within 20 minutes, talking to a paralegal in the open division meeting, I came to the conclusion that you reflected last meeting when you got the second letter from your attorney. You're not a dictator, sir. If you were the chairperson, you're not a dictator. You run and manage a meeting following the rules that have been established by the public entity, that's what I was told by the person there. You create the rules, and your job is to manage the meeting so that it doesn't get out of hand. But you don't, you can't, you know, you can't just push, no, I know, I know.
Thank you. I'll respond to the last question first.
Yes, thank you.
The last question is, that in the absence of the entity or the body establishing a policy, the chair's opinion is what rules the body, and I'm sure the Attorney General told you that.
No, sir, no, he didn't. But with due respect, here's what they said. Here's what, okay, yes, go ahead.
Since this board has not adopted a policy, then that's what we're doing today, I believe, I believe, you know, we would, you know, we would reflect that. With regard to the, you know, your assertion about the transfer of money, I think it's a million three, and every vote, excuse me, every transfer of money was accompanied by a vote in open session. With regard to the reasons that supported that vote, some of that was in executive session, and I can't talk about.
So is that for 2000, that 1.3 million is in 2011?
That 1.3 million is over the period of time that, since 2007.
Oh, just, that's what you said?
Yeah. And indeed, if you take a look at the budget amount, that is a public, you know, that is published, as far as what the budget or post-budget of the Cape Light Compact is going forward.
We've never seen it, it's not public at all, zero.
It was part of the minutes of the meeting where the vote was taken with regard to this item, and I believe that if you were to request a copy of the minutes, you would, the documents that support those minutes would be given to you. And if they weren't, if they weren't, that is a clear violation of the open meeting.
Who would we request that of, what you said?
You could request it from our administrator, or you could request it from me, but it does have to be specific as to what you're asking for. Now, I believe you were told by the Secretary of State and the correspondents that I saw was that we are not supposed to create documents to respond to, you know, let's say, to questions. We are not, you know, we are not, we are not obligated to do that, and I believe I've spoken to you about that, and, you know, and to you, at the same time, I believe when I spoke to you out in the hall, I gave you a copy of the intergovernmental agreement under which the Cape Light Compact operates. And in the article, there, it specifies what the purpose of the Cape Light Compact is, and it spells out the rationale by which, by which the creation of the Cape Light Compact and the transfer of monies occur. And all votes with regard to the transfer of money did not occur in secret, because that would be illegal. It all occurred at an open meeting.
And they're not in the minutes? No, they're not in the minutes.
With regard to the Cape Light Compact, there are 21 members of the Cape Light Compact, plus the county commissioner. As a county commissioner, I have a vote with regard to policy, but not with regard to the weighted vote as far as the transfer of money. That resides, that authority resides with the 21 members. All the 21 members became members of the Cape Light Compact through a vote of town meeting, or in the case of Barnstable, of town council, that joined the Cape Light Compact. The Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op was formed by Articles of Incorporation with the support of the Cape Light Compact, and they operate in a, they operate in an independent way. We do have a vote on the Cape Light, on the Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op with regard to all matters, we have one vote. The Cape Light Compact also has one vote on the Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op. That's the organization, and that's how it's set up.
Well, can I ask you one follow-up question? When you go and vote, or when Ms. Downey goes and votes, or Mr. Zalinski, are they voting as private individuals, or are they voting in their official capacity as a designatee from the Barnstable County?
Now, from Barnstable County, in the case of the Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op, Maggie Downey has been appointed by the Cape Light Compact Board to represent the Cape Light Compact Board. Mark Zalinski was appointed by the commissioners to represent the commissioners on the Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op.
But when they vote, do they vote as individuals, or do they vote?
They vote representing, they vote representing the constituency which appointed them. Remember, all authority, when you were appointed to the Finance Committee of Wolfley, your authority is derivative from your, from the appointment. Since you didn't run for election, you were appointed by the authority of the selectmen, so that your authority rests within the selectmen. Their authority rests with the appointment that they received.
I guess that's what's so confusing to members of the public, and that is, how can you say that you don't have any supervision or any opportunity?
We have supervision, if I may, we have supervision over the vote that Mark Zalinski has in the Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op, because he represents us. We do not have supervision over the vote that Maggie Downey has, because she represents the Cape Light Compact.
You see, can you understand, sir, the conflicts that exist amongst these three groups? That she's a county employee. When she's there, she's not on her own free time, she's being paid as a county employee.
Excuse me. Under her job description, it clearly calls out that part of her responsibility is to manage and provide administrative support to the Cape Light Compact. That's part of her job description. So her responsibility in that, and wearing hats, because that's what people do when they're in public life, they wear many, many hats, but there is no conflict among that, because the Cape Light Compact Board is the one that she reports to with regard to that particular, with regard to the authority or the responsibility that she has.
Well, we could, and I really, you don't know.
Okay, I'm going to have to call this.
I know, but I appreciate the fact that you've been willing to engage a little bit, and I hope that this could set some precedent, Mr. Doherty.
It will, I have to say that I am getting close to what I would call the line at which, you know, I would be in violation. As a matter of fact, I'm keeping this, I'm trying to be very careful that I'm just responding to your questions and not engaging the other commissioners to make this into a deliberation. I hope that I've responded to your questions to the best of my ability with regard to the responsibility, you know, that I have. I do not have a conflict of interest with regard to any of these matters, because 268A is clear. Since I do not have a personal benefit from any of the responsibility that I have, then I am not in violation, and I do not have a conflict of interest.
With all due respect, there's a lot of people disagree with that interpretation. Thank you.
Then I would suggest to you that you, that if you have a problem with that, that you contact the Attorney General and have a clarification of it.
Yeah, and we plan on doing that, obviously, but.
Obviously?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, yeah, we, obviously, you know, we disagree, you know, with respect, we disagree that that interpretation, I think, affects. Can I, can I give you the letter, sir?
Yes, please. Yes.
Thank you. And again, thank you, and I hope for future meetings that there's be an opportunity like this for other topics too, so there's at least, when you talk about an open meeting, this seems to be more open than previous meetings, that's what I'm pointing at. Thank you.
Did you have a question?
I don't have a comment.
Are there any other public comments?
I'd just like you to know that I may be recording portions of this meeting, I haven't recorded anything so far. And also, with respect to the charge for the special county commission.
The one to Roche and Beck and O'Leary?
Yeah. Did this board take a final vote on that? I know that there was a discussion between Sheila and Bill and the other, Pat, but I don't recall seeing it come back on an agenda, and I don't recall it in any, I've checked your needs-to-action items, and I don't.
We haven't taken a vote on it.
You have.
We have not.
You have not.
We've discussed it, we've sent it out to Roche and Beck and O'Leary. I don't believe that we've been notified that they've accepted the charge, although they have, they have that conversation.
They did accept it, yes.
But we have never had a vote that said that that was, that was the final part of it. When did we vote on that?
I don't think we voted on it, but I think that's easily rectified.
We agreed. We signed the letter. We signed, yeah.
Yeah, we signed the, was it the draft charge?
The draft charge, and they agreed to it, so.
Okay, so, but I, other than, other than you telling me now, I have no formal, personally, I have no formal indication that they have indeed accepted it. I know there's been conversation, and been interviewed in the paper, but if, to the question, if the question is, do we have a vote on it?
As a final document. As a final document.
Not to, that's my knowledge of belief, unless you have some...
All I know is that they accepted it, and they are going forward and discussing the members of that, who they're going to have on that committee, because that is not our, that's now their committee, it's an independent committee.
Okay, no, they're recruiting people, but our authority is to appoint them. They are coming for us...
They will come forward with that list.
For us to approve or not. Does that respond to the question?
I think so.
It answers the question that you have, that a draft went out to them, but a final charge, if I understand correctly, a final, any final language on the charge was not subject of a vote, although you may have signed the draft.
If I may, I don't think we voted it. We simply agreed. We had a draft. We approved the draft. The charge and the letter was sent out to them. And as far as I'm concerned, it's...
You might say that it falls under the...
It's in their hands, and we're expecting to have them let us know who they're selecting for their committee.
So in signing the letter to them, you consider that your approval of...
That was our draft, and they did not make any changes.
I would consider that, that we're aware of.
I guess I was, personally, my understanding was that I was waiting for some feedback from them as to whether or not they had any suggestions or changes to it. So perhaps there was a, let's say, a difference of understanding. But nevertheless, the process is going forward, and we expect to hear. According to what I read in the paper, it was your article, that Rochebeck said it was mid-July?
That's his schedule, yes. And Roble O'Leary also responded after, he responded on Friday, and said that he's received it.
Right.
Okay, any other public comment? Yes, Jerry?
Here we go. We had some other same question. We're gonna come back next week with some more questions on this issue. But when does a draft become a final document? And I had thought when it was sent. I understood that it was to be looked at by the chairs and might possibly be refined in some way. So we would appreciate knowing that this draft has become officially the charge.
Thank you.
Well, again, there was a difference of understanding with regard to this, and Sheila and Pat have said that. My understanding was that the draft charge went out. I was fully expecting to hear back from them with any input. And also, that was the reason I encouraged you to, let's say, to offer some comment as to what you saw in there. So if there's a problem, it resides with me, and I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of weeks ago, I requested that we have meetings when we are meeting, that we are meeting when we know our county administrator or assistant county administrator are present, and they're not here today. They could clarify a lot of these questions if they were here. And I would really request in the future that we do not have meetings without their presence.
I would agree. I think it's really important.
This is not good.
I mean, if there were some unusual circumstance, that's one thing. But when we have planned meetings and we set the time, and everyone knows, we should be setting them so that we know that everyone who needs to be here can be here.
And they know we meet on Wednesdays, and if they have a conflict, we can always change this day if they have to be somewhere. So I'm not sure where they are today, but we should have them to answer these questions.
Marcus at the Macris.
And I believe that Maggie's at Rise Engineering in Rhode Island.
Well...
Macris is the Massachusetts Association of Retirement Systems.
We certainly can change the day of the week. There's no, you know, we are not required to...
Down to Tuesday, Wednesday.
I would like to make a policy that we do not meet without their presence.
I'd like to, if we're talking about this, and I believe we should probably, the next item on the agenda, I believe, is the open meeting law. I would like to suggest that if we're considering a change in, a possible change in day, we consider a change in time because although we've enjoyed the presence of interested members of the public, if we met at a time when people were not at their employment, perhaps we could see more people. And like the selectman meeting, I haven't seen any reason why we couldn't meet at a time when that wouldn't, you know, when we could be available to the public. So in any case, I think that that's something that I think we ought to seriously consider.
Maybe we'd like to ask for a comment.
Comment on that?
I think that would be wonderful. More public would be able to attend. As we commented, there were many people who took the day off from work in order to attend some of the previous meetings in the last two months. So I think you would hear from a more substantial, you know, number of your constituency if you met in the early evening.
Like a 6:30 or a 7?
Yeah.
6:30?
Yep. I think so.
Thank you very much. I hope you will consider that.
Remember, Sheila brought that up.
I know. In the spirit of transparency and inclusion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I think it's back to our regular agenda, unless there's... Okay.
I still have them here.
Good.
Well, anyway, the next item on the agenda was the, looking at the policy. Did we get the policy in the Needs Act before?
No. I have the ones from last week, but I thought Bob was going to send us...
I thought we were supposed to get a refinement based upon some conversations we had, and I don't see anything here. Well, I went through the Needs Action folder before we came in, and I did not see anything, any update from Bob Troy. The main thing, when we, there was, at the Mass Municipal Association, there was an item, because we do have representative on the Attorney General's Open Meeting Law update, and the remote participation is still pending, is still one and two. But there was some comment, and next week's agenda will have that, that I had already added, as you might remember, it's in the new business section in the agenda. And the purpose of that was to allow for the introduction of topics that would not be known by myself as the chair within the, before the 48 hours. But there is specific language that needs to be part of that new business, new business section, which specifically says that, and that according to what, you know, to the direction, well, let's say, the information that I got when I went to MMA and talked to our representative on that committee that needs to be included, I copied that language and gave it to Kara, and the next agenda, the new business will have that. So that, for example, when Mr. Ribnick was speaking in public comment, I would probably have suggested that that would be the appropriate time for him to, let's say, to introduce, you know, those comments. Now, so where are we with regard to this policy? Because the other part is that if we are to, if we're gonna adopt a policy under which we operate, I've looked into different, you know, let's say, different schemes like Robert's Rules, and there's one that's used by the town, by the town council in Barnstable that is appropriate for a legislative body, and there are some other, there are some other policy documents that would, you know, that would establish rules of conduct with regard to parliamentary procedure. And that might be something that we look at to incorporate into, let's say, into our operation. But in the meantime, are we in a position to, let's say, to accept a policy that, since it's May 25th, that has not been updated?
I would rather not. I would rather put this off until next week and maybe request county council, and again, to have our administrator here.
I think that that would be a good idea, for the simple reason that although we didn't think he needed to be here for this, I thought that if Mark was here, that that would basically clear that up.
Yeah, and I think that between now and then, you know, we could write our own comments, send them to either Bob Troy, and he could disseminate them for us, or we do it through Mark. But what our ideas are on this night, we can take, we can take the lead from what Bob has written and give our model.
Unfortunately, a piece that's missing here is his refinement of the comments that we've given him.
Yes.
The last week.
And what we said to him last week was that anyone can comment on anything they wish in public comment, and they would have three minutes. The board, we would not be allowed to deliberate anything. We could simply listen, receive whatever comment. And if there isn't a time to respond, then we would respond, probably the following week, because we couldn't respond and deliberate at that time. And then, but then, anybody in the public who wishes to be on the agenda just simply can call the office, ask to be placed on the agenda. I mean, it should not be that much of a problem. And you call and say, "I'd like to come in. I'd like to meet with the commissioners. This is what I want to talk about, and I have some documents that I can provide you. I will give them to you by Friday at noon or whatever, and this is how much time I need." And then the secretary writes it down, and then when you come by or you call, the secretary or admin assistant would say, "I have a request, and here it is, and this is where I've placed it on the agenda." And unless you say, "No, not this week, next week," or whatever, then that's how it goes. I mean, that's the way I think government meetings usually operate.
Okay, there is one other piece.
And then usually the person says what they would like from the board. Would they like just a discussion? Would they like a vote on something? And they specify, "We would like a vote on this matter," or something like that.
If I may.
People do it all the time.
Mr. Ribnick referred to it. I mean, how I, and I have read the law, and I've read the guidelines, it seems to me that the Attorney General's office is trying to address the fact that some meetings, you know, the town of Barnstable would never take away public comment. So sometimes they sit there for 45 minutes with many individuals coming up and either saying good things or bad things. However, they allow that, and sometimes those same comments are being repeated. Sometimes they're just people's feelings, and they really don't have anything to do with any matter at hand, and they're taking it 45 minutes before the meeting starts. So we all know that Barnstable can go to 11 o'clock at night, sometimes due to public comment. I think that the Attorney General's efforts are to be able to curtail that exchange in that time that is taken. However, I do think that allowing at least three minutes, and if there is a situation, say, again, as Preston just, you know, he had a lot that he just wanted to get out, we can always make a motion to say, "I make a motion to extend the time, you know, for this particular thing." Now, if it's something that's, we don't want to extend the time on because it's totally irrelevant, you know, those people, everybody has at least three minutes. We all know that most of the time, it is the League of Women Voters coming up saying that this is a comment that we would like to bring to your attention. Here is our paper, and, you know, it usually doesn't take more than three minutes. And if that, if there's a little bit more time needed, we can allow it.
It's not allowed in three minutes.
And then if there is something that's going to be a real discussion, such has been requested, that that be sent to us, that it be put on the agenda, and then we can openly have a discourse and discuss this with the public and amongst ourselves. Not necessarily having a vote, but have the discussion, and if we feel there's a vote needed, we can put that vote on for the next week.
Or not.
Or not. This isn't our run.
I think the part of the process is that if you're asking for, say, a deliberative process, then we have to make some judgments with regard to whether or not it's appropriate for us to address it.
Serious people with serious issues want serious time and serious results. I mean, that's really what it's about, I think. If they're really serious about something and they want some results, then they take the time to put their information together, they ask for the time, and they expect, whichever board it might be, our board or any other board, that we will do our due diligence and do our homework and be knowledgeable about the issue so that when they do come in, it's not, we're not, not unaware of what their issues are, and we can respond appropriately to them. I mean, that's really how it should work. And that's why I'm a strong believer in asking for time on the agenda. I really believe that that's the best way to get response. Because that way, if you ask for the time and you provide the information, you can expect that you will get a response, that it just won't go by the boards. Sometimes if it's only under public comment and the board isn't prepared, obviously, there's a certain reluctance to make judgments when you're really not prepared to make them. So I think you deserve response. You deserve some action, and that's how you do it. I think it's the best way to get things done.
I believe that part of my problem in this has been that this board, this body, has not developed, let's say, a policy with regard to it. And the steps that I took was to get, to get the attorney to put together a process by which we could establish a policy that would not be based upon a reaction, but be based upon what would be an appropriate way to respond to the public's questions so that we'd have a level of consistency and be able to do that.
And we have the bones of that right here. And we talked about the bones last week, and I think Bob Troy understood that, and he said he would come back to us and take all of that and reframe it in a policy that he thought would address what we asked him to do.
And unfortunately, we don't have that in front of us.
So I make a motion that we put this on the table next week.
If I may, before I make that, I think that we've established several things. Number one, I think we have established an interest in meeting at a time that would be more convenient for public discourse.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
We've established, you know, a policy by which we will insist upon having either the administrator or the assistant administrator present if we had a meeting, even if it requires us to change the day that we need.
If I may, one thing we have to think about, if we do that at 6:30 same, and if we did it on a Wednesday, we'd be attending the Assembly of Delegates prior to the meeting. So, which isn't bad because unless we're asked to provide a report, that doesn't matter.
That's another point. I don't believe that based upon the way the Assembly of Delegates is set up, that they are, we going over there as a board and saying that we're in recess and meeting with them, if we get drawn into discussions, we are, we might be, or they might be, in violation of the open meeting law with regard to questions they ask.
Not if only the chair speaks, or someone, one of us...
The point would be that only one of us can really speak, be the designated driver, I guess, at that particular time. And in that case, I believe that we could, you know, go through whatever questions they asked and respond to it to the best of our ability. However, if the three of us are sitting at the table and we start in a conversation that, you know, that is all three of us, then I think we are getting, we are skirting...
No, that won't work. One, and usually it would be the chair, would have to speak and represent us. We can be there. It's not our meeting. It's theirs. So when there's no violation of the open meeting law, you can go to somebody else's meeting, but you can't, couldn't deliberate or make decisions, but the chair can speak for the board of commissioners.
And I think it's very important for us to make that, to make that as a policy decision, that only one of us would be there to speak, although all three of us could go.
Right. I think that it would be in everybody's interest. I happen to be the lone driver last week, and I did address...
Yeah, how was it?
...open meeting law, that we had had this discussion earlier in the day, and I said, "Just for your own, I know that some communication has come to you, and we are in the process of writing a policy, and I recommend that you have an established policy so that everybody knows." I mean, it's good that everybody knows the rules, the public and the body that's conducting the meetings. And so as I went through, you know, some of our discussion here that, earlier that day, I said, "So, giving that, I'm here to, you know, see if we can give it a go and file a open meeting law as we're sitting here." And of course, you know, different questions came up. I did address the CLC and CEBIC, and that we had met with attorneys, and that our, under the opinion of the attorneys...
Be careful, because those discussions with regard to that were held in executive session.
I understand...
And if you speak about what the attorney said in executive session, you were in violation. So be careful.
What I stated, which is what we have been stated publicly, is that we have been told by council that we did not have oversight. That is what I said. And that was public knowledge because we had said that here in the meeting that day. So that was, there was a question on that, and I said that it was a good question.
However, in the paper, you quoted as saying that in executive session, the attorney told me that we did not have oversight. So I suggest to you that... So I suggest to you that the framing of your answers has to, you know, has to, you have to be aware of the, you know, of the executive session.
Till the minutes are released. Yes, okay, that might have been, okay, that might have been confusing, I'll look back at how that was, how that was stated. And so to get back to our point, I think that we should not necessarily have to go over there all the time. I think that if we want to schedule ourselves once a month to give a report, have one of us go and give a report of what has gone on in the previous, what are the actions, what is the county pursuing, what are our, what is our agenda, and how are we going forward with that agenda? And to include them in on that agenda so that they can be part of all of the things that we're trying to do as a county, since they are part of it, I think that that is a good thing. And if they have specific questions for us, that they give us those questions, and we decide what is the answer, and one of us go over and do it. Otherwise, we are opening ourselves up just to.
The three of us, none of us have to go over.
That's what I mean.
Okay, number one.
I don't think that we should be on the weekly schedule.
Number two, we could designate an employee or a staff member to go over to make that report. Number three, we could write up bullet points and give it to them.
Right, and if they have other further questions, they can bring us back for the deliberation. But I think that by going over there just to chat, number one, is not always in the best interest to the public.
Why don't we invite the speaker to meet with us during our meeting and talk about our participation in the assembly meetings?
I think that's a great idea.
Excellent idea.
And see what the speaker thinks, and what the speaker might like, or what the speaker believes that would be helpful to the assembly. Because the whole purpose in being there is to, is to have some interactions, some dialogue, some communication, and, but you're right, maybe.
Communication, it's very clear that the communication is clearly defined as a report.
It's only a report, that's right, so it has to be.
It is not where, for example, in past time, we would be asked by delegates, "What, how do you intend to act on such and such?" And all three of us would be there, and that is a clear violation of open meeting law. Because the open meeting law, under the definition by the Attorney General, is that the public needs to be aware of what might be discussed, so that if they wish to participate, they would have an opportunity to do so.
Sometimes when we go there, you kind of feel like you're in parliament, and you know how the prime minister gets grilled by all the lords and everything.
Things thrown at them from every side.
That's kind of how you can feel when everybody starts asking questions.
Going back to the time when I was a delegate, Mary LaClay wouldn't speak to me for months because I would ask her questions. So I understand, I understand the interrogatory nature of the discussion that's over there.
Right, and it's not appropriate, without it being not ahead of time.
But it should be a very meaningful exercise, and maybe if we meet with Ron, we can work something out.
It also is more productive, as opposed to being adversarial, it feels adversarial, as opposed, it should be more collaborative.
Well, let's get back to the time of the meeting, because that's really what we were talking about. Do we want to change it?
I've always felt that having a meeting during the day accommodates staff, but doesn't accommodate the public.
I'm all for having it in the evening.
And that there is no selectmen, there is no selectmen's meeting that is held during the day in order to get the public. Now, in Harwich, the selectmen convene at 7 o'clock at night, public comment is exactly, as you, you know, as you said, because I've participated in it as well, you know, it's a discussion.
FYI, sometimes.
And it's a dialogue, and people have an opportunity to put things in there, and I've certainly participated in that because of, you know, several other responsibilities that I have in Harwich. That was my opportunity to report and to, let's say, and to get feedback, rather than being specifically on the agenda for, you know, for a report. Now, the, when we have, when we have, when we have changed the meeting place and time in past time, I remember, let's see, before you were, I think it was before the two of you were on the board, we went up to Bourne, for example, and the only person that showed up was Don Zarino.
Right, yeah, we were there. We all have done that, and we've done this in other various places.
So what we need, what we need to do is to figure out, how do we make people aware of the fact that we want to accommodate and invite their participation? As a practical matter, if we have, if we had the meeting, let's say, in the late afternoon, there'd be more parking out there, okay? You know, as well as, you know, let's say, the opportunity that people that might be working, you know, would have a chance to get here.
I think if we want to really make it known that we are changing certain procedures or policies, we can always write it up in a press release, so that it is, I mean, we have some press here some of the time, and others show if they think something's going to be discussed. This way, it can be sent out to all media, ask them to print it where it will be seen. It could be a press release as to our discussions on this, that we want to be more open, we want to invite the public, and that many things are happening here. We have lots of issues that are going forward as far as our energy issues and our wastewater issues. These are important discussions many times that we're having, and we want to be able to have the public there, and that this is to accommodate that. I think that all news organizations would be happy to put that out there for us, and then it's just a matter of consistency, and the public will then be aware that we meet then, as well as, I'm sure they don't even know that, that we meet now, so.
Those who are interested in what we're doing.
They show, but we might be many more interested that we know, that we don't even, we're not even aware of, and they would come.
So why don't we put this back on the agenda next week?
Good idea.
Pick a date, like July 6th, you know, Wednesday, July 6th.
It would be the first day, yeah.
6:30, something like.
Right, that would be the official change.
And this is where we're going to meet, because maybe we need to get another place to meet. Not too many chairs.
We're the landlord.
Right, no, there's, yeah, we can, maybe.
How many thousand people do you expect to show up?
Well, I don't know, you never know. I suppose we can meet here and see how many people do show up. Maybe if we could make a very interesting agenda, you know, I always think, the thing about a three-member board is that sometimes it's very conversational, and it's not very formal. Now, there's a, there's a wide gap between conversational and formal, but I think somewhere along the line, we have to, we have to move from the, to less conversational, but not too, too formal, if you know what I mean. And if you have a, if you have a different setup, and maybe in the evening, and a different kind of an agenda, it might, it might be better.
What do you have, what do you mean by a different kind of agenda?
Well, I shouldn't say a different kind of agenda.
Okay.
I don't know, I'd have to think about that.
Well, we, it just, let's just, I think, I think it's a positive move that is more, that makes us more available, the meeting is more accessible, and that if we.
See, our agenda just has a lot of stuff on it. And it doesn't, I mean, it just gives options, let's put it that way. There are a lot of options on here. Some are votes, some are reports, you know, reports, new business, I mean, those are options, and I know you have to have options on the agenda. But I think more meat would be, would be helpful. So people really knew what we were going to do. Like, right today, we're talking about two things. There's just, for continued discussion on public, on public comment, and then the.
Which is what we're doing.
I know, which is a good discussion, and this is good, this is meaningful. And then we're going to talk about the state budget funding. Is that for wastewater, I assume?
No, that, no, that's actually the letter that we're sending in support of Paul and his Wiki's request for the line item that he has in.
The $150,000, which is wastewater.
And there's a letter in here.
The way the Senate released, they made public their budget on Monday.
Yeah.
And that $150,000 is in the Senate.
So this is, this is in support of that.
Right, right.
And the letter is in the needs action folder, you know, to send forward, so.
I mean, it's all in committee still.
Yeah, but what he asked for was us to support.
Yes.
You know, with a letter, and the letter's there.
Right, so we'll sign it.
Oh, okay.
And that was, that was put on there so that it would be on the agenda, and there wouldn't be any reason not to, you know, if we have any.
We're off track here.
Yes.
We have to talk, if we should resolve the public comment issue, and then.
Well, the public comment issue, according to the discussion that I've heard, cannot be resolved unless and until Mark is, Mark and Bob Troy contribute the expected update that we, you know, that we were.
So we need to ask him to get us that next week.
And may I also just bring up to the point that Attorney Troy did send something out this week, I'm not sure if it was an opinion or.
It actually was a refinement of the minutes, and in the refinement of the minutes, that regardless of whether the minute, whether the minutes are, or our meetings are taped, or either audio or video, we have a responsibility that it be a summary.
A transcript.
Not a transcript, that it be a summary of our discussion in sufficient detail, that if somebody were not at our meeting, they would have a sense of what we discussed.
Exactly.
So at this point, since neither, none of us have been designated as a scribe, one of us has to take that responsibility of making that summary. And at this point, I guess that would be me.
I would like to make a motion, no, that's not, that's not our job. That is a clerk's job.
Well, what do we do after this meeting then? Because we're, we're in need discussing these things.
Yes, I understand that. So these are things that are going forward, and these are policies that we're putting in place. To me, it has always been helpful, even though that there is an audio and a visual recording, if there is a certain conversation or discussion that takes place over in the Assembly, you can go to the transcript of that meeting. And I know that that's an expensive route to go. However, I think that that is, that is all-inclusive of what the open meeting law is suggesting. And I don't think it is up to us to write the give and take, because in that refinement, he says there has to be a sense of the discussion between the body, whether they agree or disagree.
It's among.
Among, excuse me, among the body, and, and, thank you for correcting me, and.
It's a fifth-grade teacher, I mean.
Yes, and the, and also the votes, and any documents that were submitted from the public, or were provided by the board or anybody in our departments. All of those have to be in a packet somewhere available to the, to the public. So I think that we should consider looking at how much that would cost and have an independent stenographer. I know it's expensive.
Well, we're nearly, really not required to have stenographic minutes, but what we need is somebody who can capture the essence of the discussion.
Right.
And then, and if there is a vote, actually record the votes by name, by or nay.
Yes.
Every vote has to be recorded in the minutes.
I have never seen, but you cannot find it. When you see, when you see, we have been relying on the video, but we need that.
We need a clerical person here to be able to do those minutes.
We need, we need the administrator, we need a clerical person.
Well, we don't need an administrator, we, well, yes, we need the administrator, but we need a clerical person to take minutes.
So that is a discussion I'd work to, how would we resolve that?
On the minutes from last week, all items moved by Mary Pat Flynn, second by Sheila Lyons, and proved three zip, so there was a recording involved.
Okay, all right. I don't know how that happened.
Now, the other thing, as we're, before we leave the subject, the draft minutes have been, I've asked them to be distributed by Friday at noon to you. Did you get them?
I didn't get them on Friday because I was having technical difficulty, but I have since.
Okay. In any case, it's my effort to get the draft minutes to all of you, so that if you have anything that you believe needs to be added to the agenda, that you have an opportunity to do that in a timely way.
But I got them yesterday. I knew I got them. Minutes of 6:1.
Okay, but they were sent, they were sent out on Friday. Okay, so is there anything else that we need to discuss on this matter before?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, are you still on that line item about the open meeting? Is it possible for the public to give any comment during that?
Well, it was suggested you could, so what do you have to say?
Well, the first thing I'd like to say is that it's very heartening to hear this conversation, to be honest with you. I think this is what is needed at the county government level, and it's very gratifying to hear that. I have two points. One is, I just found out that you can be, actually participate in this by observing, by, I think it's online, it's a realigned feed, so it'd be great if the public knew through the publicity effort that that is something that would help engage people. I know there are some people, I watched the one last week after the fact, but then I heard that you could actually see real time.
Mr. Bibler is on the internet.
Yeah, I know, he's already emailed me that. So I think it's wonderful to be able to do that. And second, my other point, sir, is that it's still a question, and I hope it's addressed definitively in your policy that you're creating here about the open meetings, is how does the public get an item on the agenda? We have been trying for weeks and weeks and weeks. We were told we had to do it in writing, so we've been sending to you in writing, we dropped them off because you said you weren't going to be taking any more emails from Mr. Bibler and others. So I guess we would like some understanding of how you actually can get something on there, and I love the idea, Commissioner Flynn, like, for instance, we've asked for time, and it's been granted by the Speaker of the Assembly on July 6th, it was going to be tomorrow. I know, it was going to be the 15th, and because I have trouble getting a form. So we're going to be on the Assembly delegates for 30 minutes. We know exactly, so we compare appropriately, get information to them. We can do a, we can do an audiovisual presentation that day. So I love the idea, Commissioner Flynn, that if we could say, we would like to have 10 minutes on a certain line item. I mean, you could say, "No, we don't have that much time," but if we knew it in advance, we could come prepared with documentation and things. So I would hope that there's some definitive way that we understand, or anybody in the public understands, how they can get an item on the agenda.
Well, I believe that's part of the discussion that we've been having, is to, the policy would include that. In the absence of the policy, I felt that your questions were asked and answered based upon the transfer or the request to CDEC to respond to your questions through the, through the letter that we sent them.
Just to respond, it should be that if you call or come in and you say you want, you need 15 or 20 minutes and you'd like to be next week, is there any time? And they could say, "Yes, there is time next week." Or, "No, the commissioners have a full agenda that week, but you can come the following week, what time would you like to come?" That, that's the kind of dialogue that should take place. I mean, that's the way I think it should work.
And from the public's point of view, I think that would really be a tremendous.
I mean, if there's time in the agenda, you get it, you just get it.
Yes, Mr. Roger.
Yeah, this may seem very trivial, I hope it's not, but during comments period, I would appreciate any questions being answered, and not just comment being taken, the commenter being thanked, and a move on to the next person who has a comment. I realize there are some questions which perhaps cannot be answered, but if a question is asked, it would be very helpful if that could be answered, and not just a.
One of the drafts we received from our council says that since, under public comment, public comment should be limited to three minutes unless otherwise approved by the chair, so it could be extended like it was today. Since the matter has not been included on the posted agenda, the commissioners may not participate in discussion of the topic.
That's on the three-minute comment.
That's for any public comment.
So if a question is asked, we can say, "Thank you for that question," and we can answer that.
Yeah, I mean, we have to be very careful about that, because if we get into a deliberation and a discussion, then it means that if there were other people out there who would have loved to have participated in that but didn't know that that was going to be brought up, that's why it's a violation of the open meeting law. So that's why, it's really better if you ask to be on, you save yourself a lot of time if you just say, "I need 15 minutes on the agenda." And you have a right, you know, you, I can't say you have a right, but it's, nobody, you don't have a right, you can ask. Nobody really has the right to speak, you have to be, the chairman allows people to speak.
If I, if I may, I, on, to go to a little bit on the other side of that, if it's a question that is not a question that cause, that asks for deliberation, but is actually fact, and it exists, and the answer is somewhere, I don't see where a problem is in either directing people to where that answer is or answering it upfront. I mean, if it's just a straight-out answer, this is this, if they want to dispute or say, "I disagree," then that can be put on for the next thing. But if it's just a matter of clarification.
Well, I believe that today, I did respond to that, but I did not.
And I think that that is the deliberation of the form.
As far as, as far as, I hope that I try to avoid it. Now, let's get back to how things go on the agenda. I believe that part of what we need to establish as a public body is that, I might have an opinion. opinion that I don't want something on the agenda, and, and the two of you may. And I believe that one of the questions you could raise, which is a legitimate one, is that if, if you believe as a, as Commissioners, that something should be on the agenda, then I can, you, I can ask you, for example, well, I don't think this is a good idea, and you could say, no, we think it should be on there. So, in our policy, I believe that there should be some, you know, some method by which that can, you know, that particular thing can be addressed. Do you follow me?
Yes.
Because I think that that was a question that-
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Because, while I might, you know, well, you know how we feel about this. I haven't talked about it. But in any case, I think that that avenue should be open, and, but, but it has to be established by a policy that we, you know, that we have accepted, rather than just having that sort of a, what I'd call a reactionary, you know, kind of activity.
Yes, I understand, I understand.
And that's been, through this whole process, I've been very, I hope I've been very careful in making sure that every step has been covered by things that we can, you know, we can rely upon, and not be, and not have to reverse at a later date, because we come, we came in with new information, and we were just sort of responding based upon a feeling that we had. Okay, so where are we on this, is it time to call in?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we did come up with some suggestions, and I think we should send those off to Bob Troy in an email.
Okay.
And that, because we want to include policies related to how somebody gets on the agenda, we want to talk about the Assembly of Delegates, and we want to talk about responding to questions. And then there was another.
It was inviting the Speaker to come, I, that's, I mean, I, I can give you, I'm going to take the notes here, what we said we were going to do for next week, so.
Okay, so if you could share those-
I will share those with you.
With Kara, I guess, so we'll make sure that we, that they get back to Mark, that would be great.
Yep.
Okay, so with that, I think we'll start on the next item on the agenda, which is, have you all had an opportunity to read those?
Just one, I'm sorry, before you close this section, I just have one question relating to, to new business. Earlier, when Preston Ribnik was addressing you with comments, and he said they would be lengthy, you suggested that perhaps they would be better under new business, and, and then, you know, we just moved forward. If it had been under new business, then just using Preston as an example, would, would there have been an opportunity for the full Board of Commissioners to, to entertain a dialogue, and to actually have it be an agenda item where there is give and take?
On, I believe that the open meeting law says that we could take your comments, we could allow you to introduce a topic, but we could not engage in a, let's say, in a dialogue, because that, that indeed would be entering into an area that was not, it's not an agenda item. The point is that, that we're trying to allow for more public input based upon what the open meeting law says we can do, and still allow the public at large to participate. So this is, this is the area where, where we're having a lot of problems with the, with the interpretation and the speed with which the Attorney General is, is moving. Because at the committee that I sit on up at the Massachusetts Municipal Association, we do have, our Chair of the Municipal and Regional Administration Committee sits on the Open Meeting Law Committee, and we've been trying to get that committee of the AG to move on remote participation, as well as, as well as how do you go back to what we, what used to be an opportunity for, let's say, interaction with the public? Now, the interaction with the public is still a very, it's a very fuzzy area, because while there's an encouragement to have a conversation with the public, there is not a clear definition of how far you can go, or how far, or, or, you know, what your limits are, other than if you get into an area where there is a give and take, then they say it's up to the discretion of the Chair to decide whether or not you're getting into the area of deliberation, as far as what the discussion goes. And that, and that, to me, we get there very quickly, so I, I took the position of stopping that, because we did not have a policy of this Board under which we operate. The Attorney General will tell you that the Board, the, you know, the elected Board of the, of the public, of the public body, if they set a policy, can operate under the policy that they have established, they have some latitude with that. And since we had not established a policy, I took the arbitrary position as Chair of following what I believe to be the letter of the law with regard to this. Now, as you can see in this discussion, we've tried to open up a path by which we can get to, if not, you know, if, if not a, what's it?
Dialogue.
A dialogue, at least to an area where we're all operating on the same basis, and that, that the, the public, the ones that wish to participate, have the opportunity to choose to participate or not, based upon notice that's been given to them on a reasonable basis, and under the statute, that's 48 hours before, before the meeting.
I, I understand that, Mr. Dari. My, my thinking is that the, and my understanding of new business is that new business is on the agenda as a catch-all, as a safety valve. And as you were about to ask Mr. Ribnik to, to wait and, and come forward at that time, it seems like that would be the appropriate time to have an open dialogue with all of the Commissioners, rather than just speaking through the Chair.
That's weird.
And it would, oh, excuse me, just a moment. And it also might be an appropriate time to ask questions that could be answered. And whenever I've chaired a meeting, oh, you know, you know, I know it's not on this scale, but I do chair meetings, new business was a time for people to come forward, and we could have an open discussion with the group.
Before, before, before you say that, Sheila, back before they changed the open meeting law-
Yeah.
New business was exactly that. People would come in, they, you know, they say, they're bringing something up, and you had an opportunity to discuss it. The open, the new, the changes in the open meeting law are very arbitrary with regard to what you can have as a dialogue. So that, but this is something we're trying, we're trying to work on in policy.
If I, if I may, new business, in a sense, was a way of getting around, or it could be used, to introduce a new topic, make a decision, and go forward. And so to allow the public's input on any decisions that are made, there is more scrutiny on new business. As a matter of fact, I'm not even sure if it really exists that, under the new interpretation, because that is a way of, of getting things done without a lot of public input.
I understand.
So, again, it still comes down to, I believe that we have to have a, a period of time where the public can bring things to our attention. We may even have a discussion on it, but no action can be taken. That, I mean, that is, that is clear under new business. Even if it is something that is new, action cannot be taken. So I think that if we just make that clear as to new business, what is new business, and how does that differ from public comments?
Sheila, there's specific language that the AG has come up, that comes under that-
I have read a lot of it.
We just put that today.
I have read, I have read it, Bill. And, so that is our decision on how we're going to handle those two, two-
So discussion can, can happen, but no action.
Discussion can happen, and how are we going to incorporate it into our agenda?
That would have to be part of the policy decision of the Board.
That's exactly, yeah. We will decide where that comes in. Does it come in a public comment, or in a new business?
If I could make just one more request, and then I'll sit down and be quiet. If, I know that I personally have written to all three Commissioners requesting to be, have items on the agenda, as, as Jim Rogers did for this meeting. And our only response is whether or not it shows up on the agenda. So there's a certain frustration value there. And I know other people have also sent in their requests, and, because they've sent copies to me, and it doesn't show up on the agenda, and there's no response. So if I could just beg the Commissioners to do one thing for us, and that is that if you find that it is immaterial, or out of your jurisdiction, or something that you do not want to address, if you could please just publicly, at the start of a meeting, where it was not put on the agenda, make a statement to us, to me, whoever has sent it, that it would not be appropriate, and we are not going to put it on the agenda, so that we won't keep coming back, hoping that somehow our issues will be addressed. Thank you.
Mr. Jim, I think that we need to speak with Mark. We need to designate one person in the office that will be responsible for the agenda, who takes the request and responds to you, and calls you back, and says, I've received your request, and here's the time I put you on the agenda. Or whatever, or whatever the response is, but there would be a designated person in the office to do that. And it's a number you can call, you can get answers, you can make your request, you get the response. If there's additional information that is needed, that person will call you and say, we need, the County Commissioners have asked if you could provide this or that, or something else. But one person that you can call, that you can count on, who will follow through on your request to go, that's what we need to ask, Mom.
I think you make a note of that.
I did make a note of that.
Thank you very much.
Let me, let me add one other thing. I'll take full responsibility for your not being on the agenda. And I apologize if I did not take that action of notifying appropriately. So I, I'll take, I'll take the responsibility for that.
It's just so you would understand, so you could keep asking.
No, I, I hear you. I, I hear you.
It was like a two-year-old, you know, I, you never say maybe, you say yes or no.
Just, thank you. Well, this, hearing this discussion, especially your most recent comment, Commissioner Flynn, makes my heart sore like an eagle. I mean, from a public point of view, it's a, it's a wonderful thought. There's one other dynamic that's in play right now, and I, and I just found out just a couple of seconds ago, that because of Steve's ability to transmit real time, there's also a function that allows viewers, real time, to ask a question.
That's true.
And I just was notified by an interested citizen who has a question, and I was wondering if you might entertain it, if for no other reason, to illustrate the power of the technology, so that you can expand the reach of the Commissioners' meeting, the people who, unfortunately, whether it's in the evening or in the morning, they can't attend, but they're highly engaged in the issue. If you think it's appropriate, at least to try it this morning, and see if the technology worked, I don't know if you've done it in the past, but evidently, he has typed in some relevant questions on this topic that he would be willing to present to you.
Is this from a voter in a municipal county?
It's, it's from an interested citizen who's been engaged very long in this-
Is it, is it a voter in a municipal county?
I don't know if he's a voter or not, I actually don't know.
Just wondering.
I mean, I love the fact you, 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 do you get that? Make sure you put that in the article.
Mr. Jared, at, at this moment, we, we are the only ones on the thing, there's no, there's no viewers.
Okay, are there any questions that have been submitted?
No, sir.
If I, if I may, I think that that is something that we also have to discuss, and on how many, I mean, because if it's open to everyone, we could get 1,000 questions. Those questions should be submitted, and if they're submitted through you, do they come up through your dialogue?
They can't. At the, at the opening of the meeting, this is, this is what I typed on a little message board that's here. I say, if you would like to ask a question, identify yourself with name, town, and any organization that you represent, and I will relay. And no one has done so.
Okay.
Now, I will, I will say that, remember when we first started this, I tried to get on this because I was, you know, I was out of town, and I believe I, I caught on, then I got cut off, there was some problem, but, so, I, I do know that that part of it, you know, doesn't work to a point. Now, is it possible that the question was asked, and we lost it?
I don't think so. Now, what, what it shows me is who the participants in the room, and during today's meeting, it was Mr. Bibler, Mike from the Enterprise was with us, but they have both left the room, and I get notified that they've left the room.
Left the building, huh?
They have left the building. And right, right at this moment, participants, nobody but us chickens.
Excuse me, does that record the questions or comments?
Yeah, they can-
Do you have a record of them at the end of the day?
Yeah, it's record.
Right. So then you could submit those to us.
For the next one.
No. Once this, once this is gone, it, once I leave the, leave the meeting-
Oh, they all shut down?
It's all shut down. It's, it's not archived. But I believe, excuse me, I, I believe when we, in July, that the, they're going to use a different system than this one, and it will be archived.
Then I would suggest that that is another component that we have to discuss next week, on how do we handle technology and the input through technology.
If I could, it's called remote participation.
Right.
And we need to have a policy on that, which would be very clear.
Would the Attorney General still work with it?
Yeah, I know, that-
No, no, not, not in remote participation by the public, remote participation by the members of the Board.
Well, that's one thing, but you can have remote participation by the public as well.
Oh, yeah.
And, I mean, people can submit questions on the topic that we're discussing. And then we could take those questions and respond during the meeting. And that's what I mean.
The filter.
Not remote participation by Board members. That's pretty clear in the open meeting law, I'm on a Board that does that. And we have that little gimmick in the middle of the table that is open, and that another Board member can tune in and speak and engage in the discussion.
Actually, that's the thing that's not been clear yet, you're not supposed to be doing that.
Well, Liz-
But anyway, getting back to the public participation-
But this we can do.
Oh, yeah, we can, we can do that.
Someday we'll have a screen, when people have cameras on their computers, we can see them.
There has to be some filter of the questions, so that we're answering, we're getting questions that are on topic, rather than, you know, what, you know, why is this meeting going on so long?
Right.
All right.
All right. So anyway, I think we've just about done everything we could on that.